In favor of closing the public hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to Exhibit B, and this is for information only, and these are some wonderful, the ASBO International Certificate of Excellence Award and the Government Financial Officers Certificate of Excellence Award, and I'm going to turn it over to Michael Coughlin, our CFO, for this.
It always seems like things run in cycles, and in the meeting that we are looking at the eighteen nineteen comprehensive annual financial report, we're just receiving the award from the previous years, the seventeen eighteen. So this is an award that comes from these two organizations. They are the two major national organizations that review school financial reports. And they also set a lot of standards for what goes in those reports. So it is the Association of School Business Officials International and the Government Financial Officers Association of the United States and Canada. And the first group is obviously for schools, and the second one then includes municipalities, cities, counties, and so on. So there's a lot of regulation that goes into it, and they've been very diligent about reviewing and making suggestions and helping us report not only in accuracy, but if you see the second to the bottom little paragraph, it says, "They've been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, including demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate the financial story." And I know some people, no matter how long it's explained, financial reports are not their cup of tea, and some things are confusing, but we strive to meet all of the standards that they have, and the management discussion and analysis that's in the front of the CAFR is specifically designed to be readable, to be summaries of some of the other reports. So if you do have the inclination to read that and, or read the report, that's an area to concentrate on. You get kind of a summary of what's been done, and then some comments from the district as we look at what the reports say. And then there's a lot of demographic historical information in the back part that is also very interesting, if you look at how we compare, how we, how numbers look in our region and over a ten-year period in a lot of the, in a lot of the cases. So it can give you some pretty interesting trends. So we are happy that this is the twenty-second year consecutive year that the district has received both of these awards. And again, it does take a lot of effort from a lot of people to be able to do this. So I don't just accept it for myself or the business office, it's the whole district, and it includes you as well, because you keep us to a standard that we have to not only report accurately, but give clear information on what we are extending to you and to the public.
Tara, did you get a picture of these?
I'm going to give unusual ways through Michael's Marlin, I thought that your headshot would be more appropriate than the side view.
Thank you, I just want to tell our public about it. Lyle, I cut you off, go ahead.
So to what extent do these two organizations set the standards and procedures, and to what extent do they just evaluate?
I'll give you a, you know, there's a lot of rules, they're called GASB rules, the Government Accounting Standards Board, and they are like a national, a national board of experts that say, "How can we develop governmental financial reports to be credible, to be understandable?" And one of the things that's been, the last ten or fifteen years, the goal has been to try to make school records be as close to private records as they can make it. We have different criteria with assets and so forth, but what they're looking at with that is, there's people that invest in our bonds, and they want to know that they're dealing with a credible organization. And if our rec, if our financial reports are significantly different than a private corporation that they're investing in, they may say, "Oh, I don't understand this, so I'm going to bypass that." So as we are able to attract investors even on that level, it gives us credibility that people think what we report is just as credible as a large corporation, and that's kind of what their goal has been.
So either, either these organizations promote or require the conversion from cash accounting to accrual accounting?
We are, and I know you've sat in financial reporting with the previous auditor, and one of the first things he says is, "You've really got two or three sets of books. You have one based on cash." And within that, you, you have not a full accrual accounting, but you have a modified accrual accounting. So it doesn't take the receivable of property tax for the whole year and claim it, and then you have to chip away at it as the months go by. You wait until June and say, "Well, there's still some yet to get, so we'll do the accrual then." Just like we do salaries for summertime for teachers and other staff, we don't record that as an accrual all year, we do it when it's, when it's due, and then we have a modified accrual. So it's cash basis until we get to the end and we make the adjustments. But then we also, as you know, have a set of underst, of reports, it's, it's really not how we do the books, but we have to compare to the, the un, the authority balance, and that's a very critical part of how we budget. So all of those things are necessary too. So that might be one of the issues that's a little bit different between what ASBO is looking for, but as you, as you could well imagine, fifty states are going to have many different ways that they record their budget authority and their timing and all of that. So they are both very close to just a cash basis with modified accrual at the end of the fiscal period. Thank you.
And Lyle, just, I went to both of these websites, and they're pretty intense on what is required for the awards, and I mean, it's pretty impressive, so. The website gave a lot of good information, so I just want to give you and your staff kudos, Michael, because twenty-two straight years, obviously you haven't been here twenty-two years, but that, that's a pretty good record, and, and it does help with your bond rating, so I think it's also a wonderful thing for the district, so please pass that on to your staff.
Thank you.
And look for the press release coming.
What's that?
Look for the press release to come.
Oh, okay.
With the, with the frontal view, not the side. All right, anything further than on that? That's just for information only, so, again, kudos, Michael. All right, then we will move on to our consent agenda this evening, which consists.
Of information.
Yep, yep. I was getting ahead of myself. Was wondering this evening, the next item is information from individuals and delegations, and I was wondering if there's anybody here that wishes to address the board this evening? All right, seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda, which consists of four items, the minutes of the November eleventh, two thousand nineteen regular board meeting, and the November twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen special board meeting, item C, personnel appointments and adjustments, item D, bills due and payable and bills paid between board meetings, item E, and the East and West High School Bleacher Replacement Project, item F. Are there any items that board members wish to have removed from the consent agenda?
Item D and item F, please.
Item D and item F. Anything further? And could I get a motion to put items C and E on the table, please? Thanks, Rhonda, and a second.
Second.
Thank you, India. Then all those in favor of approving items C and E, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to Exhibit D, and the recommended motion is the Board of Education approve the personnel items as listed.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Thanks, India, and discussion.
Yes, I just was wondering, as far as in the classified appointments for student need for the multiple special needs parus, and I'm just thinking, is this a normal time of year to have that adjustment after numbers are all, are in and kind of settled in the buildings, or, because it looked like six of the appointments were all for student need, so, or did we get that many more students? So that's my question one, and then also, I just noted in some resignations, there was a couple special needs teachers, so I just kind of wondered how our special needs pool is looking for subs for that, those positions. I guess the one was immediate, and the other one's not till the end of the year. So just kind of concerned a little bit about the special needs area.
Thank you.
Now, great questions, I would say in general, when you look at the classified section in regards to special need, a lot of that is, or could be changes within the IEP that requires that one-on-one, where it didn't require at the beginning of the year. Some of this also is just hires, and so we've had some people that have resigned, or we've actually had some positions that we have not filled since the beginning of the year, and so you're seeing some of that as well, and unfortunately, it's taken, you know, this long to where we've been able to find them, find candidate, or find a candidate that we feel comfortable with getting into the classroom with some of our kiddos. So that's part of where you see some of the changes from that perspective. It's also tough in the, in the middle, in a sense, in kind of the middle of the year at times to even hire or interview, and so that's a part of the problem. You'll see some of the hires, especially these are somewhat late, where you would hope to see that beginning of the year, but once you get to the beginning of the year, we're really trying to start school, we're really trying to work through all those pieces, and so that's part of why you see kind of the, the number of classified personal appointments from that standpoint. And then switching back to the certified resignations, you know, I would, I would agree with you, there are, Ivan's done a tremendous job as well as our building principals as far as looking at ways in which to still serve our students with some of the needs that we have, from some of the recent resignations, and also just in general, looking at some of the changes that will happen at the end of the year. We are working pretty hard on what type of, well, I know, two things. One, we've thought about it from a recruitment standpoint, what are some things that we can do differently to, lack of better words, sweeten the pot in regards to our special education teachers. The other piece of it is, what can we do currently to allow for more support from our teachers from a building perspective as well? I think those two things together have, have caused some of the recent resignations, and it caused just some issues in general that we're trying to address. But I would also tell you, just in the, the many different emails that you receive from districts, this is a need across the board. I believe Ivan said Davenport had figured out a way of at least supplying or providing such a substantial stipend in accordance with hiring that it made it so they had no openings at the beginning of the year, and I believe it's Davenport, it's either Davenport, Dubuque, it's one of those D school, or D, D community, or districts, I couldn't remember, it is Davenport? Yeah, that, that, it may be something that we talk about, I hadn't even talked about with Michael, but it's, it's a concern, it's a concern from a certification standpoint. There, there are some, there's some different ways that we're trying to approach it to address the problem.
No, I appreciate that, because it is a nationwide problem, I think, for special ed teachers, and, and I would be totally for, I mean, a stipend, and even maybe a higher stipend for the paras in those special needs classes, because that's a hard job.
Yeah, we have, there's a couple of different plans we have in regards to not only special ed teachers, but also special ed paras as well.
Thank you.
But there's been a number of articles, like, you know, regarding the, the reasons, and money is just one, but stress seems to be even more than money, so, you know, what can we do to, to somehow support?
Well, and the Register just had a big article on the number of teachers leaving Des Moines, and the stress and the danger in the classrooms. They just ran, I think, a three or four day series on that, and it was pretty thought-provoking to read that.
Yeah, it's a, Lyle, you hit on an issue that's something that we're really trying to work on, I know if Ivan was here, he'd speak pretty urgently about, you know, that stress level, because I, I agree, I mean, it doesn't matter if we pay twenty thousand dollars for one teacher to come into our schools, if we can't retain them because the stress level is so high that they need to leave at the beginning of the year, that becomes a problem, and so I could tell you that that plan I was talking about does focus on that retention piece. And so what are we doing to support our, our teachers, our special education teachers, not only within the classroom, but obviously within the building as well? We, we plan on rolling that out as we move into the new year, and so you'll see more information about that, and that may be even something we either do a workshop on, or even come to the board about to discuss. But we've had, Ivan and I had had at least three to four conversations about that in particular, and I would tell you, a lot of the work that we've done, that you've seen some, a part of your, your emails as well, as far as the behavior committee, as far as the social emotional pieces, these were all proactive things that we're trying to do to address some of those concerns.
I also have a question on retirements, I see we just have one here, but can you go through the timeline when we know who's not going to renew their contract, and then how soon we're able to follow that up with recruiting?
We send an email out here, I'm looking at the clock like it matters, we send an email, we send an email out here around the end of December slash January, asking principals to just check in with people, not force, but check in with people to see, you know, where do people fall, where are they going to be? That helps us get an understanding of what, what we're going to have available. It doesn't give us a clean number, and that number doesn't happen until after contracts are brought back, that we know what we have for the following year, so we can go out and start hiring. We're looking at a couple of different ways in which, you know, one way, we were able to move the system online to where it happened that much quicker that we can get that information. We're even looking now at the date, since we have agreed for two years now, right now, that March fifteenth date is the date that we cannot send contracts out before then, but after then, we're even trying to push it up. I think May was our deadline before, if we can push it up even sooner. I know our principals would like that, just to get a better understanding of what's available. I haven't necessarily polled our teachers yet, and so that's part of the conversation that we want to have in the next couple of months. But in general, it's around that time period when contracts are out and when they come back, that twenty-one days after they, we initially released them, excuse me, would be the time period in which we really get a better understanding of what we need for the next school year. I would like to just quickly, just call your attention to one of the, one of the retirements out of, out of my department, I won't say her name specifically, or I guess, I think I can, it's not an issue. Yeah, Micky Waschke is more than an important member to our team, and so if you see me flailing around or running around with my head cut off, it's just because she's, she's definitely going to be missed, the, the work that she's put in, not only for Bev, but also just for myself, from a transition standpoint, has been transformational, and so all the kudos that you give me at times, don't stop, but all the kudos that you give me at times is really just about my team and the work that they're, they're putting in, and Micky had as much, if not more, to do with that seamless transition than anybody else.
I just, I just have a quick question, I know that you kind of touched briefly about the special needs, but we're also looking at the elementary teachers, how are we doing with sizing and classroom with that? Are we doing long-term subs with that? How are we doing with that? I know some people have mentioned that as far as sizing, especially at the end of the year.
Off the top of my head, we're doing pretty good, we had some mid-year graduates that we're going to bring in for some long-term subs that we had in general for a couple of our bigger buildings, and so right now I feel pretty good about elementary, obviously, you know, I'd love to reduce class size as, as much as possible, but right now, just based on our rubric and the, the tool that we use, I feel really good about where we're at, and about with some of the resignations, or even some of the leaves of absences that we've had, we've, we've been able to fill those positions, and so we feel good about that.
Good to hear, thank you.
And I was going to go back to the special needs issue as well. After a couple of months of seeing, you know, the trends of us losing special needs educators, I did a little bit of research, and one of the things I found was that, believe it or not, stress was not one of the main reasons that they weren't retained, it was administrative support. Now, of course, that was from various national articles and things like that, so I was just wondering if, when was the last time we did a survey of our special needs paras and our special needs educators to see what it is we need to retain them?
We haven't, and that's definitely something that we'll look at, as far as kind of what are the things that we need to do to keep people, especially the people we have currently employed? I would tell you, it's a little bit of both of what you just said. While it is, you know, lack of administrative support, I think it's also within that lack of administrative at times, understanding about the stress that not only comes with some of the behaviors, but also documentation. So I can tell you, I've talked to a number of special education teachers that, you know, with the, with the requirements of getting IEPs and ensuring the data is accurate, and just the amount of work that has to happen, and at times can always happen during the day, it has made it very, very tough and very stressful, especially, as you know, you know, there's many requirements and things along those lines that are tied to students' needs, and when they're not met, there's an issue. So it's a little bit of both as far as, I can't say it's all just administrative support, some of that just could be from, you know, not necessarily having the time to do the work, or feeling like their administrator doesn't give them the time, even though in a sense it's out of their administrator's hands, and so we're, we're working on, again, Ivan has a really good plan, and that's why I'm going to, I'm really excited about what he's putting forth as far as what type of support, not only the buildings can provide, but also what the district can provide, because I can tell you that that support is, if not low, low as well, and again, I think it's just having that conversation about, tell us what exactly you need, and I don't think this happened in earnest.
Well, that's what I was going to say, is that the administrative support wasn't necessarily limited to the building managers, it was district-wide. And, and so that's why I really want to appeal strongly to the University of Northern Iowa School of Education, because they turn out some really great teachers, but if you really want to have your finger on the pulse of, you know, a really great opportunity to learn about the diversity in special, special needs, special education, I really want for some of our student teachers to, I really would like to see more of our UNI student, not just UNI, just across the state, but UNIs closer, to see more of them in our buildings, you know, because, because they are teachers who are learning, they would be able to add that body of knowledge based on their student teaching back to the University of Northern Iowa, so that they could maybe enhance the curriculum, so that when they graduate, we can really have teachers who are motivated, because what we learn is that a lot of teachers who get into special education, it's not because they're not Because what we learn is that a lot of teachers who get into special education, it's not because they're not aware of the challenges. But I think, uh, each district is nuanced, and I'm really proud to say that I think Waterloo has one of the, the more u- unique districts in the state. And, um, I think we will offer an excellent opportunity to really help our teachers, hopefully to stay, because they'll have a really good frame of reference. So, U N I College of Education, we'd like to see more of, uh, your educators, or your student teachers in our buildings. Thank you.
And I would second the notion of soliciting feedback, cause it's not my assumption that administrators are intentionally unsupporting. We have to look at what support they need, what processes we have in place, what escalation processes in terms of, you know, some of the behavioral. We can just look at all those, so I think getting feedback, uh, from that whole group is, is really critical. That doesn't mean we're gonna, you know, we're able to support everything that they want, but at least we need to, to know, uh, what they feel that they need.
Well, just getting more funding at the state level too, I mean, anything we do there to help, give us a little bit more money, if we can help you're paid more per teacher or get more paras or teachers in here, so.
And also, when you just said that, Rhonda, I was just thinking, is, is there ever a, could there be, just thinking when you said administrative support, that I'm thinking, could there be like a data entry person that would help the teachers entering all the paperwork that they have to enter, that someone would be real skilled at that, that they could assist the teachers in, in that role?
Without giving details apart, about the entire plan, that's part of what was part of the conversation.
Great, excellent idea.
Excellent idea.
Will our, uh, teaching curriculum, starting next fall, include special needs of any kind?
You mean at the Career Center?
Yeah.
Well, we're just developing that right now with the fall, with the, the launch in the fall. And so, I, I know that some of the classes that we will offer through community college would, would be applicable to different, you know, student needs. So, whether it's a actual, we haven't selected the classes that we'll offer, but I think that's a good suggestion to look at.
All right, is that all good? All right, thank you. Um, all right, then everyone in favor of approving the personnel appointments, appointments and adjustments as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to item F, which is on page twenty-eight. And that recommended motion is the Board of Education approve the East and West High School bleacher replacement project and publish a notice to bidders.
Submove.
Thanks, Jesse, in a second?
Second, go ahead.
Arm wrestle, and discussion.
Okay, I, I pulled that, just in reading this, I, it said on the main levels, so, um, what, why not the upper levels? Or, I guess, cost prohibitive there? And then, secondly, what do we do with the old ones?
Mr. Channer is here this evening to answer those questions. Thanks, Dan, for coming up.
You're welcome. I hope I can answer them all. Um, so, um, what we're replacing is the court-level bleachers. The upper-level bleachers were replaced, um, by the district at some point in the past. They're not as old as the bleachers that are on the court itself, so.
And Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, but part of that also, as I understood it, was that there, that handicapped accessibility on the main floor is kind of what, more of what we need.
Correct.
Um, and so, on the main floor, it's obviously easier, those second-floor bleachers are, people are, are not getting up to anyway, so.
And at West, um, the, there is a desire to move the bleachers away from the court itself.
Yes.
Side.
It's a little too tight.
It's a little too tight. Actually, one of, of the guys I work with is a referee who has refereed there, and he's like, please, move it back.
What's the timeframe that we're looking for replacement then? And how would that work? Would that just be a summer project or?
Yes, it's a summer project. Uh, the intent is to be ready by, uh, June one, so just as soon as school gets out, based on weather. Um, and then have the bleacher project completed, uh, by the end of June at both schools.
Okay, thank you.
So, will this reduce the seating capacity?
The, uh, seating capacity at West is going to be reduced by eighty-eight seats. The total new number of seats there is, uh, two thousand and seventy-five, so down from two thousand one hundred and sixty-three. At East, uh, it's an increase of ten, so.
And are the old, um, bleachers resavagable, or what do we do with those?
They're being taken away.
Scraped or whatever, okay.
Again, that's the ADA, they can't be fit and reused.
At West, we're actually having to revise the
Yep.
rate of rise, increase the step height a little bit, uh, so that we can, uh, maintain the usage of the gates that are in the railings on the mezzanine itself.
Yep.
Um, and checking with code folks, um, we are also increasing the height of the railing at West to match up to what is at East.
What type of material is gonna be, will they be like wood or will they pl- hard plastic?
The bleachers themselves, yes, the seat pans are plastic.
Okay, thank you.
Have you seen the ones at Cedar Falls?
Mm-hmm.
Red ones, that's what they're gonna be more like.
Okay.
A little bit more graded.
Are they colored?
Uh, the intent is to, I believe the seats are going to be black and, uh, the East and West name, uh, set up in each one of them.
Thank you, Dan, appreciate it. All right, then all those in favor of approving the East and West High School Bleacher Replacement Project, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. The next item on our agenda then is item G, and this is the second reading. And, yeah, you are right there, wow, Tara, you're beating me. Uh, the recommended motion is that the Board approve the following policy, academic progress promotion slash retention.
Submove.
Thank you, Jesse, in a second?
Second.
Thanks, India. And with that, I will bring Tara Thomas up with our Director of School and Community Relations to walk us through the second reading of the board policy change.
Thank you. After receiving feedback from the board, we took the policy back before the committee and it was decided to strike the line, as you see indicated, from the second to last paragraph, that would take the parent out of the initial decision-making and put the principal as the initial point of contact. And that was the only significant change that resulted from the discussion of this policy coming before you previously.
But we also talked about the authority to retain, I think. And I still don't see that the school district has any authority to retain if not requested by the parent.
For either a retention or promotion.
Yeah, and it says must be directed to the associate superintendent.
So, if you look in paragraph two, you know, the various, uh, options, flexible time options may include extended, extended. Retention is not part of there nor promotion. Um, and then it just says, principals shall evaluate parental requests, so.
Well, I think as a committee, what we looked at, at, we, India, I think you were there too. And what we, and Esther was too, but he's not here. But what we looked at is that, the paragraph two would be the, um, tools to get to what we wanna do. Then in paragraph four, it's saying, the principal shall evaluate a parental request and provide the parent with a written decision for either a retention or promotion. So, these are the tools that are gonna help our students to exceed high academic standards throughout their entire school career. So, those are the services we're gonna offer, but the decision would be made up initially by the principal evaluating a parental correct request and providing the parent with a decision regarding retention or promotion.
But if the parent doesn't request, then there's no authority in here for the school district.
To retain.
Actually, by law, the school has full authority to make that decision. So, um, if, if the question goes with school versus, that's, that's actually been proven in court multiple times. So, the, the school actually has the overriding authority to make that decision about retention and promotion. Uh, I believe paragraph four, and Tara can add in, I believe that was just intended to state, if a parent wants to make a request, this, the, the decision lies on the school staff to make that decision, and actually that runs through Stephanie's office. So, they make that decision that way. But if a parent would like to, to, to issue that request, if the school doesn't start that process, then a parent could make that request. So, if that wording needs to be changed, we would certainly entertain whatever you think on that.
Well, I don't borrow with that reading, but the flexible, but the options above, it seems like ought to include retention and promotion.
The, the actual word, yeah, retention, we could certainly add that.
Extended day, extended week, extended year.
Retention, alternate scheduling practices, yeah, we absolutely could have.
Yes, we could add that into the list of options in the second paragraph. And we can amend that without bringing it back before the board, if everyone's agreeable to that.
We could do a friendly amendment.
Okay.
At retention.
So, you two have to do it.
Would you all be okay to add retention?
And promotion?
Yep. And promotion. And promotion, and promotion.
Like accelerated.
Yeah. Whatever the proper term.
Yeah, just as amended, so my friendly amendment would say that, um, as I get to the right, would be that the Board approve the following policy, academic progress, promotion and retention as amended. And I think it was, yeah, seeing, and then, uh, which one, Indy and Sue, you got it, India?
India, yeah.
All right, thanks. Is there anything further for Tara? All right, then seeing none, all those in favor of approving the board policy changes, that second reading for? Number five oh five point six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Takes us to the next item on our agenda, which is item H, and this is the S B R C Modified Allowable Growth Request. And the recommended motion for this is that the Board of Education authorize the administration to submit the S B R C application form to the School Budget Review Committee requesting the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty Modified Allowable Growth Funding totaling nine hundred forty thousand, nine hundred eight dollars and eighty cents to be funded by twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one cash reserve levy.
Submove.
Thanks, Sue, in a second?
Second.
India, and a discussion. You can turn this over to Michael and, go ahead, Lyle.
This reads as though it's mandatory funding by the cash reserve lever, it's not, is it?
No, it, it's may be funded.
Says to be funded by the.
Cash reserve levy, yeah.
But that's a later choice.
It is.
So, I don't know if that wording needs to be changed or it's okay.
So, the two could just be changed to may.
Mm-hmm. All right, so Sue and
India.
India.
India, would you be amenable to a word change from the word two to the word may? Which may be. Which may be funded by the twenty twenty twenty-one cash reserve.
Yes.
Both of you, okay.
Which the action would then, uh, accomplish, that you would accept applying for the authority to be raised by it, but the decision will come later as to whether back with cash.
Indeed.
Yep.
Okay. Good catch, Lyle.
In April, when you approve the budget for next year.
All right, all those in favor then of approving that F, that Modified Allowable Growth Request for increased enrollment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. The next item on our agenda is item I, and this is on page thirty-three. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education accept the recommendation of the District Finance Committee to receive and place on file the Waterloo Community School District two thousand eighteen nineteen Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
Submove.
Thanks, Sue, in a second?
Second.
Thanks, Lyle. My trusty finance committee people right there. So, the three of us actually got to see the, the audit already, but you all have, uh, copies at your desk as well. So, are there any questions for Michael?
Well, and as we sat in the audit, the books can be overwhelming with lots of numbers. And so, the auditor indicated to use this one, the communication letter, and that's a good synopsis of, um, what they did, the findings, and, um, everything that really we need. And it was very, I believe, um, put in a very concise, readable manner, the charts, everything in there, I believe were very helpful. And so, this would be the good place to turn, especially on page eight, showing like the general fund sources of revenue. Um, it shows, which we thought, Lyle, Shanley and I all thought that was quite interesting to see, you know, the local, state and federal pies that we pull from. Um, just gives a really good overview. I was, I was very impressed it made, um, numbers and financial stuff a little more understandable. So, I would recommend everybody looking through this and reading this.
And I think I, I was, we were remiss if I didn't say that, uh, the auditor's report was the best opinion that an auditor, auditor can issue as well. Um, and so, I mean, that doesn't happen in every district, that's for sure. So, um, Michael, I know you and your staff work very hard on that, um, but it's very commendable that we did not, we had the best possible review, so. I don't know if any other board members wanna say anything, but, um.
Well, and I, I would like to add that the auditor, um, also said that, um, Deb and Jeff, um, were very, very receptive to anything they asked for, and you, but they specifically said Deb and Jeff, because I think it goes to them and goes to you, but, and that they were, um, timely and, um, very helpful. And I believe that they still feel like they are learning Iowa process a little bit more, but I think they're doing a very thorough, complete job. And, um, I've been impressed with them the two years that we've had them. Yeah, just to comment on that about how much work it takes. Um, they send the letter of request of the things they need in early June. And we have a pre-visit in June, even before the year is over. And then, it seems like the exhaustive list they sent us grows quite, uh, with a lot more items. And then we have, we close the books, we, uh, do the, do the certified annual report for the D E. So, we've got everything balanced and finished, uh, from that end. Um, and then they come and do the final audit, uh, in the end of September. Um, we are now in December, and as of the time that you listened to this report at the end of November twenty-sixth, we were still completing that audit. There were still questions, there were still things that they wanted backup for, uh, to just do a very complete job. So, as a result, and I know it was said at the meeting, um, that now we need to get caught up. So, we truly are a couple of months behind in all the things that we do because of all the things that have to happen with this audit. So, um, best plans laid ahead, you will see full financial reports next month with the current year. Um, but that's how comprehensive this audit takes in time to get done, and it's very thorough. Um, and they do a lot of work for it, and then we have to prepare all the documents when they're done. So, um, it's about a four-month process.
And I would just like to add that, uh, as is customary, the, the three board members on the committee meet privately with the auditor after the report, with no one else there, and get an opportunity to really, uh, you know, pick their gra- brain. And we say, you know, what can we, what can we really do better? How's this going? How's that going? Uh, and I believe the essence of their comments was, well, I prefer in our second year now, that, uh, the processes that have been put in place to kind of automatically generate the information or to, to be able to respond quickly are, are much improved. So, that's what you would expect, you know, that you kinda had to customize reports for them, but now. customize reports for them, but now their impression is it takes less time, that may be in dispute, uh to respond to their requests because we've we've kind of automated some of that, is that, is that a?
I'll say yes and no.
Somewhat fair, somewhat.
Yep, there there has been customizing to it, um but it is a process of still learning. We are the only Iowa school they have, um and the first year was, um they had to establish uh all the records and the backup and prove what the previous auditor had reported, so they dug very deep the first year. So that did help in the second year of saying, okay, we feel good about where we ended the last audit and we can continue. Um so yes, there is some um efficiency with that, um but as any good auditor, they find more things to ask for, so um they are being very thorough, asking a lot of questions, I know the young man that was the head auditor um in the first audit was just on the team. And since the time they signed a contract with us, he has been going to every Iowa ASBO meeting, conference, training, um to try to get a feel for Iowa, because it is different than Minnesota.
Yeah, but I would concur with Lyle too, and I mean, we even, you know, ask as far as, you know, recent um surrounding districts with maybe some financial um discrepancies going on in the district and how foolproof are we of that, and he, you know, she said you you never can be a hundred percent because there's so many people with with um um at, you know, your booster clubs and your selling the concessions and that type of thing, that it it's very difficult, but that they actually pool, you know, randomly and they found no problems, but that it's just, you know, it you have to keep a very tight watch on that to um, you know, to be diligent with the dollars, so I appreciate all you guys do, it's a huge process, so thank you.
Good report.
Thank you.
Anything further from the board then? Alright, then all those in favor of approving the two thousand eighteen nineteen Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to item J, and these are our financial documents, and that recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the Treasurer's Report for June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, and approve the list of financial institutions as depositories with corresponding maximum amounts in Policy seven oh one point one Depository of Funds and place on file the two thousand nineteen Certified Annual Report as required by Iowa Department of Education.
So move.
Thanks Jessie, in a second.
Second.
Thanks, India. In discussion, I can turn this back over to Michael, these are our um Secretary of State and our treasurer documents to be filed.
There's a couple of reports that are required in the annual meeting procedure. And the first one is the Treasurer's Report, which is part of the Certified Annual Report, the CAR.
Mhm.
And it is um a summary of the fund balance or cash balance basis um of what would be in the bank after everything is paid and all the receivables are in. Um so if you look on page forty nine, right behind the um title page for this exhibit, um it goes through all the different funds of how much fund balance we have in each one. And by looking at the audit, the the general fund dropped a little bit. Um but that was expected by the increase that we had uh put into place with teacher increases and hour increases and so it was an expected change, um and the rest of the funds are pretty much as we ex- expected and talked all year um as we did monthly financial reports, so there's the Treasurer's Report. Um and then the second report, um and go back a second, with accepting the Treasurer's Report that is tied to the actual CAR report, this is also a good time to just recognize and put on file that you've seen and accepted the Certified Annual Report. Um and that's also something that the auditors comb through exclusively, so it's it's good to know that's been under scrutiny before you do your approval uh seeing the audit. And then the other uh required document is on page sixty nine. And that is the policy that talks about uh the banks, financial institutions that we use to deposit money. And that you know who they are and that they are done under uh safe standards. Uh we cannot put uh invest money in anything that is not safe, uh that there's any risk of losing principal. Um so all of those uh banking institutions qualify for that. And then they wanted to have it listed of, to give you an idea of what could be the largest balance for the year in those banks. And Farmer State Bank that we have been uh using as our uh regular bank for all of our paychecks and accounts payable and so on, uh has also been very generous and flexible of taking all of the balance we have left over day by day and giving us a better rate than ICEJIT does. So they've been very uh good to work with and anxious to be uh a good cu- a good uh provider for us, so um that contract ends at the end of twenty twenty. So we will be putting it out in our RFP in the next year um to um go out and see who may be interested in being our operations bank. So we can get up to, I think last year we were a little over fifty million at one time um in a certain time of the year, and if you remember the graph I always give you in the report, you can kind of see where that happens toward the end of the year. Um so I bumped that up a little bit um relatively to sixty million. Um the Iowa Joint Investment Trust, all of our state payments come through that, so they will sit there for a few days or over a weekend or whatever, so we could have ten to fifteen million in there at a given time. Um and then the UMB Bank is really the bank that we use to pay off our bonds, and we have the sinking fund for the QSCB. So that can get up to about twenty million just for the um QSCB before we finally pay that off when it's due, um and then when we through the year make monthly ins- installments into the um the bond fund, that balance can build up until we make the the payment every year on the principal. So that will uh that can get up to thirty or thirty-five million as well. That gives us a little bit of breathing room, um but we're not far away from having those kind of balances in there at some time of the year. So those are the capacities that we feel comfortable with. Um reporting to you is how much money can be in those banks at any given time.
What does UMB stand for?
I don't know.
I've never heard of that.
Everything they, everything they have, and even their copyrighted name is just UMB Bank. And it's in Des Moines, they bought out Bankers Trust. So they're the same kind of a debt um payment, um financial, they they really just kind of changed the name and all the people we worked with just stayed there and were under a different name.
So is three the right number of institutions, or should the board approve a fourth? Or a fifth?
Well, this is the one we do everything with now. Um the ICEJIT almost acts like another bank and as it flows through. Um but right now, all of our bank accounts are coded to Farmer State Bank, so.
So the ICEJIT's not limited to the four-year term?
Excuse me?
They're not limited to the four-year term, the ICEJIT?
No, they've been in, they've been a part of school, Iowa school finance since the early eighties.
Is UMB, I mean up above, it says the board shall select depositories for a term not to exceed four years.
And I understand that as approving and accepting that tonight, these banks are good for at least four more years.
Oh, so you can renew.
Right.
It isn't like you have to.
Yeah, like a rolling contract.
Yeah, okay. And what what is the protection, like say Farmer State Bank, I mean, it isn't the normal two hundred fifty thousand, I hope.
There's a state law that I know when you look at FDIC.
Yeah.
You know, it's a, it's a small amount compared to this, but for um, and I can't quote you the the Iowa code numbers anymore, I haven't made this statement for a while, but they have safeguards built in that they will fund up to the capacity that the bank allows with the school district. Because when we put out an RFP, we tell them it's going to be this high. Can you handle business this high? Um so they have to have their ducks in a row to be able to say we can guarantee that balance. And they have a lot of contact with uh state regulation that they have to follow to be able to take on uh capacity like ours. That's why we don't get bids from many banks, because not a lot can do this level.
Thank you.
Alright, then all those in favor of approving the financial documents, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. The next item on our agenda then is item K, and this is the Abstract of Votes from the School Election. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education take official notice of the Abstract of Votes from the School Election held November fifth of two thousand nineteen.
So move.
In a second.
Second.
Thank you, India, and um is there any discussion of this, this is just our our new, we'll be swearing our new board member in here shortly and saying goodbye to Rhonda here shortly. Yes, so um elected in. I know, that's what I said, I'm not saying goodbye, I'm just saying until we meet again. Um elected to District Two Director would be Sue Flynn, elected as the District Three Director is Jessie Knight, and directed, um elected as the Directors-at-Large were Lyle Schmidt and Stacy Mills. And then the abstract uh follows, so.
The only thing I have to say is I just wish more people would vote.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, just wish more people would vote, that's all.
Thanks, Sue. Alright, all those in favor of approving the Abstract of Votes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. Um and with that, then we will take a short recess to retire um Rhonda McCarrina from our board, and so Rhonda, I've kind of thought all day about how to how to say, like you said, I'm not going to say goodbye, I'm just going to say till I see you again, and while things are kind of bittersweet for me, I have to say that it's always exciting to bring new board members on, but it's always um like I said, bittersweet to um when the dynamic of the board changes and and um you are someone who I have learned a great deal from.
I can take over at any point.
Yep, and I'm, and uh, nope, it's all good, um and I'm, and I will, I will miss having you at the board table. I'll come back to that in a minute, but I'd I'd like to open it up and while I get myself together, let the rest of the board uh speak on your behalf, and we have a few things for you.
Well, I'll go first here, but Rhonda, um just when I think of Rhonda, two words come to my mind. It's articulate and equity. And like Shanley said, um I have learned a lot from you, just listening to your perspective from not always agreeing with you and you with me, I'm sure, and um but you brought a unique view to my lens that I didn't always look through, and I appreciate that, I really do, and um I learned from you that equity is not equal. And I never really kind of thought real deeply about that, but but equity is giving everyone what they need to be successful. And I learned that from you and um that what we have to strive is not to to help prevent obstacles, to help achieve every educational potential a student has. And so I've learned that from you. I will miss you because the articulate, you just, you can take a word and or a little phrase and make it sound like it's, like you could take my name and make it look like it was a movie star name or something. And I really appreciate that, because it it's just you in, I'm more wordy, I say lots of words, say what I was saying. But you're just, and and I appreciate that in you, and I only wish you the best, and I will sure see you around and um I may call you for some perspective, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Jessie or India?
Yep, no, it's been a great four years coming on together and getting to know you and I agree, Sue, you know, you had such a great perspective and, you know, we all learn from each other, you know, we all come from different backgrounds and some of us have similar backgrounds and we kind of learned that along the way and, you know, I just, you know, I love it, your ability to go out and do your research, trying to get some facts, bring bring in, you know, some, you know, some meaningful comments to the table, you know, with some, make sure to back it up, so. Susan says I look forward, we'll see you somewhere. I'm sure I have kids somewhere out there taking class with.
Uh I just wanted to say, Rhonda, thank you, um I know I've been on this ride a little short, but it's been an amazing ride, um your tenacity of just getting things done and as I have already mentioned, um bringing the perspective to the table has been amazing, I've learned so much from you and um our date nights at with those fries have been amazing. But and we'll have more, so um thank you very much, um you definitely lead with your heart, honey, and it's been amazing to learn from you, so bring it on, keep bring it, keep bringing, ask the questions, uh make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do, keep us.
Email us questions.
Yes, yes, so thank you.
Well, I I also have some words from Aster to read too, so.
They just kind of validated what I was going to say, but I'll say it anyway. Thank you for serving on the Iowa School Board and and thank you for uh running for reelection, it's not without the time and effort it costs and I so appreciate that. As has been said, you will be missed and I certainly will miss you because you've been a key source of information for me as well. Uh you know, I I try to become a farmer all sides of each issue before you really settle on a, on a position. And I've especially appreciated your your candor and your genuineness, and you always speak from the heart, and that's why I guess uh I I respect your opinion so much, so thanks.
You want to go?
Yeah, before you, okay, yeah.
Yeah, I've got Aster's in for here in front of me, so.
Like everyone, I I just wrote a few notes because I didn't want to forget some of the things, but I, it's so funny because we really didn't talk about our comments, but I think every person wrote down the same thing, so it must be accurate. So I wrote down unique thinker, you are, you add a perspective that does not exist from anybody up here, and that's really, I think that's the best board when you have seven people that come from different, you know, backgrounds and different lenses and and can think, I just think you do a great job in that. I wrote down passion for kids, you are in it for the kids, and that has never been questioned by anyone. So even though we have different opinions about how to go about that, you you, your passion shines every single time you make a vote. Um I wrote down equity lens, um you you really are all kids, you really are, and looking at that um the the access of opportunity for kids has been, you know, it's just going to be kind of a um a legacy that you are going to leave here. And um I wrote down your questioner, you have a discerning mind. Um I I get the privilege of sitting here and so sometimes somebody will be talking, but she'll quickly, you know, Google something like she just, you know, wanting to know and wanting to learn and just really looking at that, um and I have personally felt your support the last four years. wanting to know and wanting to learn, and just really looking at that, um, and I have personally felt your support the last four years, I really do. I mean, I, I feel like she, she's been appropriately challenging, um, challenging me and my decisions and, but also really supporting. And so I just, that's just, it's a hard balance to get sometimes, and I think you, you have done a great job of that, and, and just your commitment. Um, I know that she is leaving the board, but she has already committed to serving in different ways and, and staying with us, and so I just am, am really grateful. And, and the best, the best, um, I think the best balance is somebody who really helps us grow, but also grows themselves. And I have seen that in you, you have just, you, you've really blossomed, you've had lots of questions, and you're even getting a real good knack for the, the budget. Yeah. Cause that was something she's like, you know, I mean, think about it where you've, you've grown over four years, and so I am just super grateful to, to have you on the board, um, for the, the four years that you were here, and I think you've done a fabulous job, and I'm eternally grateful, yeah. Okay, so now I'm gonna read, Aster is so sorry that he couldn't be here this evening, he's ill, and so he sent me his words.
Oh.
So, so these are for Aster, I truly hate that I couldn't be here this evening, I appreciate everything that you have done for me personally and your wealth of knowledge that you brought to Waterloo Community School District. You were always one step ahead of all of us when it came to issues that affected our district, especially the major ones, such as diversity and inclusion and mental health. And I would watch as you would research on the spot a lot of the information that we were receiving and can formulate it and make it relevant and help us all to understand. I happen to be put in what I believe to be the best seat of all board between two legends. I have, and you will continue to learn so much from, I know you won't be far from us.
Oh, my mic is off, shoot. I know you won't be far from us and you will be available at any cost. I appreciate you as a colleague and as a friend. So again, thank you for your service, and I know I will see you soon, Aster Williams. So, I had to turn the mi- mic off so that no one heard me sob over here, so, get it together, geez, if I write things down, so. Um, but with that, Rhonda, we would, we are very happy to present you with this service of dedication for education, and, um, I hope you prominently display this in your office. And then we have a few treats from all of us up here at the board table, um, just so, uh, yeah, yeah, some rambouji berries. Um, and some, a little thing to get your nails done and maybe something to go out to eat, just to relax and enjoy yourself.
And make it be known, that is from the board, not the district.
Yes, it's from, it's from, it's from these, these people right here, so, anyway, it's with love and respect that we hand that to you and that we don't say goodbye, we just say until we, until we see again.
Adios amigo.
So, do you wanna take a picture with Tara? Yeah, can we?
I should've dressed cuter.
Oh, you stop. Yeah.
Does she wanna, do you wanna go down?
Now, we can do it here.
Right here?
Oh.
Come on, squeeze in here, squeeze in here, come on now, Chris. Yeah. Put Rhonda in the middle, though. Yeah. Rhonda's in the middle.
One, two, three, one, two, three.
We obviously did not get the memo on the color.
Yeah, she's in the front by herself. They were close, we love each other.
Peace.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Miss Rhonda. And just think, you don't have to stay for another hour.
I know.
Or two, or two.
I'm gonna hang out with, with you.
We lost all of our chairs, what the heck?
Oh, you're fine, I should go turn.
Oh, this is mine. Yes, of course you may.
Well, um, I just wanna say this has been awesome, and I have grown tremendously. And I, I want to, um, definitely say thank you to Jane, I think you are, um, I, I really appreciate how much you, you've helped me, and I know, you know, I have challenged, challenged you on some things, but I, I don't do them openly, because we work together to resolve things, so, so thank you for that. Uh, thank you, um, to Kingsley for being so responsive so quickly, you know, cause I do ask a lot of questions, you guys, it's just they get answered pretty quickly. I just wanna thank you too, to everybody, and Mike, thank you for allowing me to sigh every time you talk about finance. Cause that's one of my weakest areas, but, but, um, but thank you for all the work that you do for the district. And you know that I love all of the, um, your board members, and I'm not gonna go one by one because I don't wanna get, get too, too misty, but I wanna also say congratulations to Stacy, and I look forward to working with her, and thank you for the flowers, Stacey. And so she knows that, that I'm gonna be here for her in whatever capacity she needs me, she's gonna do a great job. So, again, you all are awesome board, the district should be blessed. Stephanie, thank you for just being so knowledgeable in what you do and being available and responsive to me also. And, um, and Lyle, you know, you're my buddy. So, um, I could go on and on, but I'm, I'm just gonna say thank you to everybody. Shanley, you're an awesome board president. And the I A S B is phenomenal, you know, so, and Jeff, keep up the good work. Keep up the good work.
Thanks, Rhonda. We're gonna take about a three-minute recess to, um, let Rhonda move her things, and we're gonna call Stacy up, and we're gonna get her name tag up here, so I'm gonna just do a short little recess, we'll be right back.
I know, I am really tall. So you are right here?
Yep.
And so you can always set your stuff back here, um, along this little thing, whatever, just wherever is comfortable, and, um, okay, yep, bring that up, and then they will always, they always provide a water, so you will always get water. So, okay, and you have your board book with you and everything, and?
My journal?
Yep, I got it.
I got it.
Just breathe.
You only have to do it once every four years, so it'll be fine.
So, hi, India, you have a baby girl in a band too, right?
Yes, I do.
What's her name?
Janaya.
Janaya?
Yes.
And she plays trumpet, is that right?
Uh, bass player. Yes.
Okay, I have, I love a great percussionist.
Yes, she, uh, she remembers it. Yeah, she does, she, yeah, she doesn't do percussion.
Uh, we're all.
Now that, now that, like, I've seen you, I have, I have to volunteer. You can't get it too far away from this.
Please, I have multiple other things that I don't.
Oh, like, I've come to.
Are you going to the band thing?
I don't know, I, Tori, Tori's playing.
What'd it say? So we all have been, we all have like a hundred and fifty Qs for that.
Wouldn't probably remember.
Yeah, Tasha's there.
Yeah, Cory's there.
I've had dinner.
Where at, Westside?
No, I miss Josie started at six. She's, I wish she was in Winston for me, but she, she told Danny that she better be there next year, which I thought was kind of funny, so.
So did you come yesterday?
Did I go? Church, yeah.
Okay, you walked out.
Yeah, I was there, were you there?
Yeah.
I was in the balcony.
You were.
I sat up top so I could look down.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which one's that?
Uh, Hope City. Had their church there.
Yeah, what'd you think?
Nope, I don't like that.
I don't either, I did not like it either, it's, it just was not the feel of it, church, because I went to school there, so, like, it's just, it's not church.
Yeah, absolutely.
I would agree, I would agree.
And so my father-in-law kept asking, he asked like three or four times, he said, did you know that they were gonna do this?
Push the button.
Otherwise, I don't have to worry about it.
Nope, there's, it's on, the green is right there, and.
I didn't know what he was gonna say, cause it wasn't, um.
All right, if it's all right, I would like to reconvene the board.
Right, it was more.
With our new members.
You have everybody here?
Yeah.
Yes.
But I.
Here in Kingsley, we're.
Um, hello. Can we reconvene? I would like to reconvene the board, if I may please.
You guys wanna be out before?
I've lost control of the group, once again, herding cats. I gotta go to a West High Band concert, let's go. Yes, it's at seven thirty, we all do. So, all right. Yes, so, um, thank you to our viewers for letting us have that little moment of, of moving around, and now we will get to, uh, the excitement of the meeting too, which is to, at the installation of one new director and three returning directors. And at this point, we'll be, we will be administering the oath of office, so I'm going to turn it over to Pam Arndorfer, our board secretary.
Thank you, and congratulations to our new directors, um, well, our returning and one new. Um, if you guys would all just stand at your, at your, uh, seat there and raise your right hands.
Are you Face, are you FaceTiming live?
Yep, you as well, Lyle.
Just taking a picture.
Yep, all of you. We did.
We did.
We did. Yep, we did. Now let me look, yes, yes, we did, okay, okay.
Do we have to vote on it again? I thought we did, I read them, and then did we not approve them?
Okay, so I will read the oath of office. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Director in the Waterloo Community School District as now or hereafter required by law? I do. Thank you, you may all be seated.
Uh huh, yeah, go, you wanna go ahead?
Yeah, I do. So, um, I, I just wanna, before we go on to the next one, Stacy, I just wanna welcome you aboard. We had the chance, and I think, I, I have had a chance to meet with her, and I know that we will all get a chance to do that, and so, um, we're, I think it's always a good thing when people show interest in the school board, in elected offices, and so we're really happy that you did, and it is truly a learning curve, I've shared that with you, it will be, it'll be, it's, isn't it?
Yep, oh, yes.
It takes a while, and so, we're just, we're really happy you're here and welcome, and you can ask any questions, and we'll get this, you see, I get you right at my right side here, so, um, we're, we're really happy you're here, welcome.
Between the legends, right? I'm just switching the legend out, there you go, so. And seriously, as I said earlier, you can't say anything that I probably haven't already done, or, clearly, I multiple times don't know what I'm doing, and someone has to say, wait a minute, you didn't vote on that, Shanley. So, don't hesitate to just ask away, so, um, and welcome. All right, then, the next item on our agenda as we continue our reorganization tonight is the, um, election of officers. And once again, I will turn this over to Pam Arndorfer, our board secretary.
Thank you once again. Okay, so, um, nominations will be held for President and Vice President of the Board. Um, first, we'll open up for the position of President of the Board, I'll take nominations.
Shanley. McNally. Middle initial I don't know.
That's okay, Shanley is good. Okay, so I need a motion to close the nominations.
Second. Oh.
Thank you. Okay, so Shanley McNally has been, um, nominated as President of the Board. Um, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Second.
Can I vote aye?
Yes, you can.
Okay, aye.
I'm reading.
Did you say nay?
I said second, cause I, I read second, and I said second. Aye.
No second is needed.
Okay, so Shanley has been elected as President of the Board, congrats, Shanley.
Thank you.
And I will open up for, uh, nominations for Vice President, please.
I will nominate Sue Flynn.
Okay, thank you.
Motion.
And we need a motion to close nominations, please.
Salute.
Okay, we'll go with Jessie again, and India has a second, thank you. So Sue Flynn has been nominated as Vice President of the Board, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, okay, so, um, Sue has been elected as Vice President, if you two would both stand, please, raise your right hand.
Can we high five each other?
Sure. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of President and Vice President of the Board of Education in the Waterloo Community School District as now or hereafter required by law?
I do.
I do.
Thank you, congratulations.
Y'all are just clapping, cause you're glad I get to be the one being tongue-tied all the time, so. All right, so with that, thank you all for participating. We will move on to the reorganization of the board, is that the next thing we have to do? All right, and that is Exhibit O. And the recommended motion is the President of the Board of Education of the Waterloo Community School District, Shanley McNally, be authorized to sign all warrants, contracts, and all other documents that require her signature, and the Vice President of the Board of Education of the Waterloo Community School District, Sue Flynn, be authorized to sign all warrants, contracts, and all other documents that require her signature in the absence of the President, and the Superintendent be authorized to invest school district monies prior to allocating these funds toward payment of expenditures in accordance with Board Policy seven oh one point eight, and the Board of Education reaffirms all policies and actions of preceding boards. Thank you, Jessie, and a second?
A second.
Awesome, all right, and all those in favor then of the recommended motion reorganizing the board, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right, I think that's all of our pomp and circumstance, and now we can get down to some, the second half of the meat of our meeting. So that takes us then to Item P, which is our STEM Best Grant. And the recommended motion for this is that the Board of Education approve application and any subsequent acceptance of the grant from the Iowa Governor's STEM Advisory Council in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sue, and I believe, I know Jeff Frost is here tonight, thank you for your patience, Jeff, and will you tell us a little bit about this? And, um, I know that you're applying for the grant, right, we don't have it yet, so.
So, we applied for it, and we received it.
Oh.
We were just waiting for board approval to actually accept it.
Excellent, all right.
Um, we had a tight timeframe, uh, when this came forward in September, and we wrote the grant for twenty-five thousand dollars. And as I said, we were actually, we just, we found out in October, late October, that we received a twenty-five thousand dollar grant from the Iowa STEM Council. Um, a STEM Best Grant, as it says, there's a Business Engaging Students and Teachers Grant for twenty-five thousand dollars. This is called a matching or a cost share grant, which means they are going to give us twenty-five thousand dollars, but we also have to put up twenty-five thousand dollars as a match or a cost share. And, um, Jeff Summerfelt and I actually met last week with the STEM Council via Zoom to discuss specifics and parameters of what and how we can spend this money. With that said, the purpose of the grant, um, what we wrote it on and what really, um, helped us receive this grant was that it's going to help us bring in a new program next year, our new biomedical, um, program upstairs and, at the Career Center there. Um, included in this, the things that they will help fund and that we also have to help match will include equipment, professional development of our instructor, curriculum development, and also training, and any other things that go along in those areas, along with the instructor and the classroom there. Um, we are in somewhat of a tight timeframe per se, the actual grant itself has to be spent, um, and documented by June fifteenth of two thousand twenty. So this summer, we have to actually have spent the twenty-five thousand dollars and our twenty-five thousand dollars So this summer, we have to, uh, actually have spent the twenty-five thousand dollars and our twenty-five thousand dollars on, uh, the equipment, the training, the curriculum, and items like that. Um, one of the great things that helped us score very high on this grant, we actually scored one of the highest scores in, um, the entire state, is the fact that we are being supported by Unity Point, Pam Delargadel, um, helped, she signed off and actually um, filled out documentation to help us, she's the CEO of Unity Point, Allen College. Um, also Jean Lutzinger, who's the Dean of the Health Science Department at Hawkeye Community College, has signed off and endorsed us receiving this grant. So that helped to have, um, some, I would say, some power behind us asking for this grant to move this, this program forward. Uh, the great thing is, is this is a very expensive program we are bringing in. So the twenty-five thousand dollars does go a long ways towards helping at least cover some of those initial costs that will be part of, um, buying, purchasing the equipment, and also, um, bringing in the, the curriculum and the training required of our new instructor. So with that said, um, I'm asking, uh, for approval to accept the grant that we have been approved to receive upon your acceptance of it.
Well, I totally approve them.
Totally.
Money coming in, totally. But, my question is, are we gonna get any type of equipment from Allen? You know, is it all gonna be new equipment, are we gonna have recycled equipment, knowing their partners, and just kinda the dynamics of it?
Great question, so actually on Friday of last week, I met with Jared Seliger, the President of Allen College. So, um, as part of this agreement, and part, and we're actually, I think, uh, Dr. Lindeman and I are meeting with Pam Delargadel next week, um, uh, next Thursday, to discuss even more collaboration. But I do know as part of this agreement, we absolutely are looking at some repurposing of equipment that they use. Um, they obviously stay current with the best, latest equipment. Uh, for us, if something is eighteen months old, that is very current for our students to learn on. Um, but they have to, obviously, as, as patient, you like to know that your hospital's staying current with the, the best equipment and, and items there. But we absolutely have been assured from, uh, Dr. Seliger at, at Allen, and I know Pam has told me, uh, even at the ribbon cutting, if you need anything, anytime, anywhere, uh, she actually gave me her personal cellphone number, text me, we'll make it happen. So I know they are backing this a hundred percent because of the need for, um, the areas that we're bringing in, and of course, with our pre-nursing already in place. Thank you.
Key, uh, our viewers, um, what does that look like for some, for a student to take that class as far as after they're done?
Yes.
Great question, so, the, the reality of this, if you would look at this at face value, really, it, it's a very broad position or, um, program. I think there's like a hundred plus different career options within that program. Uh, but really, if you get to the gist of what a person in that position could do at face value, um, going by the name of the program, literally, they'd be the person that would get the, um, you go in for your lab, they would get the, they would, uh, do the blood draw or take the sample, and they would get the results, and then give them back to the doctor's office of whatever you were being tested on. So a person in that, that's kind of the main focus of that program. Um, but the reality is, is this person could be anything from, um, a biomedical lab technician, all the way to a research scientist.
Yep.
Um, they could be working at Mayo, they could be working at the University of Iowa as a research scientist, um, looking at the next cure for, uh, cancer, immune therapy type of thing. It's really, um, a, a program that's going to make students really think about, um, all these things that are out there in that career field. So it's, it's very broad, um, but at its basic sample, or basic ground, they would be the, the people giving the results of lab testing.
I mean, they could even be, you know, somewhat tangent to, somebody was even into, uh, uh, veterinary science or something like that. You know, it's not the same, but they would learn a lot of the.
Absolutely, I think you and I have had this conversation because of what your daughter wants to be. Um, I, I think we've actually, before, I've heard people say they have wanted to be vets, but, you know, the Intro to Health Professions course that we offer, medical terminology, a course like this, all of that is applicable to multiple areas. You know, we're bringing in four, we have four programs in health career fields, three that are coming in next year, one that's in place this year. Um, reality-wise, and, and this just kinda happened by happenstance, but the ultimate thing is, we found out that, um, even though the four programs don't say it, you could be anything from respiratory therapist, um, to dental hygienist, um, obviously nursing, and, and really anything in the health careers field. So we're opening up a lot of different, uh, career options in, in this health career area.
Letting it get to span, so, I appreciate your effort, and, you know, it's a huge grant, and, uh, and a collaboration with Hawkeye and, and Allen both, so.
Yeah.
So do the, who do the credits transfer to, and is there a certification associated with this program?
Great question, so, uh, this program, the credits would transfer to Hawkeye Community College. Um, from there, typically Hawkeye has articulation agreements with other programs before your university. So, um, for us, it would be a student that would typically go on to Hawkeye Community College. Um, walking out of this program, there is no, uh, per se, uh, certification that's tied to it right now. But that's just because we haven't, we're kind of in the investigation phase, we're bringing it in right now. Usually it takes us within about six months to a year of the program being in place, till we really figure out what other certification options are out there for students. Um, you know, we have to work through all those parameters yet, so we know what the curriculum is gonna look like, we know what courses we will offer out at the Career Center, but we still have those, the backstory, I guess we'd call it, of what certifications and things like that. That's to be determined, but we know there's multiple certifications that do apply to this. I think, um, and I always mispronounce that, I say phlembology, but it's phlempotimus. I do know that is one certification, it's actually one of the initial ones they could get out there, is drawing blood, um, from, that's one of the things they will practice in, um, actually have the ability to do and have certification in, I've been told. But I'm not gonna say that a hundred percent until it actually becomes reality.
And, and what's the capacity in terms of the number of students and how many courses are involved?
Uh, we would take, for three blocks, twenty students per each of the three blocks, or sixty students a semester, one hundred and twenty students in the year. And, right now, um, well, we've kind of reshuffled some things, because we're actually bringing in, um, Human Anatomy and Physiology One and Two, and we've kind of created what we've called the Health Career Core. So if you take Medical Terminology, Intro to Health Professions, Human Anatomy, Physiology One, and then Two, those four classes, um, will get you into multiple gateway programs. So like, I talked about dental hygienist, that's never been on our radar, but all of a sudden, because we offer that core, it became a reality, respiratory therapy. Um, what happens in this biomedical program is we have four courses that a student could take on top of the four core courses. So ultimately, they could get eight courses deep into this program.
What year would they start?
They, typically, best case scenario would be first semester, fresh, or, uh, junior year. Um, we could have some sophomores getting into like the medical terminology and Intro to Health Professions. Second semester sophomore year would be about the earliest that you would see that take place. Thank you.
I just want one last question, I'm so happy that we received this grant. Um, I'm always curious, do they ever have grant for the STEAM? Or, yes, and do, yes, okay, great. I'm always about the arts too, and so, I'm, just wanna make sure that we're keeping equal. So.
I know.
Okay.
Equity.
Equity, yeah, the STEAM, yeah.
I do have one last comment here, and this, we missed this by, I think, two hours of Pam getting the board agenda out, just an FYI, cuz I will be back here at the first meeting in January. Um, we just found out Thursday, like, two hours after she put the agenda out, that the, um, Master Builders of Iowa, um, has given us a twenty-three thousand dollar grant that I will need to have accepted in January, so you get to see my smiley face back here again in January. Um, this is for, and this is gonna be really a cool grant, I don't wanna belabor it here, and I know it's a long meeting already. But, um, just to kinda give you a, a little background on what's coming, twenty-three thousand dollars is going to work with a group, community group called Block by Block, where our sustainable construction program is gonna build small sheds for houses in multiple blocks that, um, do not have safe places for their bikes and out, and outside equipment, where we will actually build them with money from this grant, and give them to houses in different blocks within the community. So we're very excited, just found this out Thursday, I couldn't find Pam to get it on the agenda quick enough, otherwise I could kill two birds with one stone, but I like coming and seeing you guys, so I'll be back here in January anyway. So, um, I just wanted to kind of front-load you that there'll be another one coming here, uh, in, at the next board meeting.
And I would just commend the staff who worked on this grant, because it is a competitive process, not all grants are competitive. Um, some of them, if you dot all the i's and cross all the t's, you're kind of a shoe-in, that is not the case for this. So, uh, this, the Governor STEM awards are, um, extremely competitive, and like Jeff said, I, I believe we had either the highest or right at the top of the highest scores, so great job to everybody who wrote this. We were really hoping to bring this program, and this, this is one piece of the funding puzzle, so it's, it's a great thing, that's a lot of money.
And is there a place, Jeff, that we could look online to see the other places that received this grant?
IowaSTEM.gov.
IowaSTEM.
Yep, and then, there's the. And then it has actually every award winner for the last, uh, cuz I just actually looked that up. Uh, it has it all the way back to twenty-fourteen, when it started, so, uh, you can look at it. And I think the closest, uh, I mean, I'm just looking at, there was VCLUW got one, Bond Durant, Cedar Rapids, Clorinda, uh, I believe there's ten, so. West Des Moines.
Any As in there, are they all stems, any STEAMs?
Uh, they are all stems. They're all stems.
I think this is all STEM, but there are some STEAM, so, yeah.
We'll, we'll find the STEAM.
We'll find some STEAM ones too. Jeff's like, great, find me some more grants. Yeah, we will.
Thank you, Jeff.
Alright, so let's approve this for the man, so that he can start spending this twenty-five thousand. Um, all those in favor of approving the Governor STEM Advisory Council Award, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign? Chair votes aye, motion carried. Thank you. Yay! Alright, the next item on our agenda is Item Q, and this is the Equity-implemented Partnership sub award. And the recommended motion is that the Board approve acceptance of forty-five thousand dollars from the Spencer Foundation to support the Equity-implemented Partnership as outlined.
Sub move.
Thank you, Sue, and a second?
Second.
And I'll turn it over to Mr. Bouchway for his, uh, explanation and a little more background.
Well, some of that information is just, uh, shared within there, but, uh, walk back just briefly, you know, because of time. This was, uh, part of the work that I started in Iowa City around, uh, student climate survey research, or work, um, in conjunction with, um, test scores, and, um, we looked at, uh, demographic information, um, with a focus on racial ethnicity, as well as LGBTQ, uh, for our students. And so there was a lot of work and a lot of research that went into it. Um, and, uh, it was shared at AERA, I mean, it's, it was, it was a lot of stuff. So, fast forward, I'm here in Waterloo now. And, uh, the focus is different, where I'm not necessarily focused on students and on, um, staff, the focus is staff. And a lot of that focus is around, how do we, how do we currently, um, look at our hiring process and, um, our focus on equity within the hiring process? Our focus on questions, around equity within the hiring process? What are our teachers coming with, what are our administrators coming with? And so, because of that conversation, I had a conversation with my old boss, Superintendent, um, Merly at Iowa City, and, and asked whether or not we could use some of the money from the original grant to start up the work here in Waterloo. Um, he said yes, and then, uh, with approval from Jane as well, um, we moved forward on, um, shifting some positions around within, uh, my department to support this work. And so, that's what you see right now, uh, currently, we have that position, um, within our department. We actually have it within our department, separate from this grant, uh, because we had some turnover in the last year that we wanted to move forward in this way, and my hope was that the money would follow. Now that I know the money is for sure following, I'm coming before you for approval for that grant. And, in general, as you see there, one of the key components of it is responsible for data collection, researching best practices, um, successful methodologies, analysis, and data management around equity and inclusion as pertains to, to hiring, as it pertains to our HR systems, um, looking at how we are, um, recruiting, looking at our, uh, affirmative action and EEOC plan. Um, all those things are in accordance with this position, and so, um, again, I, I can go in to a lot of different things about this, my excitement about having this position, um, and why it's important for school districts in general. Um, I, I can also tell you that, uh, this isn't new, a lot of school districts do this, um, the uni, or not the university, excuse me. Um, the Madison Community School District is a school district that we've had contact with just recently about, um, some partnership, uh, partnerships that we can do in regards to this. And so, this is something that, you know, I've, I've talked to, um, I've talked, um, with Spencer about, and was requested to speak about with Chicago Public Schools, and what, um, the thoughts and the research around it. So, it's definitely something that has national attention, and so I'm just glad that, uh, we can do some of the work here in Waterloo.
Kingsley, I was wondering in here, it said subaward budget and project period of performance, one-one-nineteen to two, twelve-thirty-one-nineteen? So, have we been, um, collecting performance data, or, what does that mean?
The subaward is for, oh, yeah, one-one-nineteen through twelve-thirty-one-nineteen, okay, I thought you said twenty-one, I was like, wait a minute, that's not right. Um, so we have been collecting that information, I mean, that's currently what Evan's been collecting, we have to provide. The subaward agreement is through the University of Iowa, as they are the, um, fiscal agent for the grant. And so, we have to provide them with updates in regards to how things are going. Our next update is coming here soon, but we have been, we have been asking some of those questions and have gotten some of the information. Some of that, some of that conversation has gone through our Equity Committee, as far as the goals and things that we're looking at from a recruitment standpoint. Again, as I said, and when I first got here, a lot of kudos has to go to Bev, because I can tell you that our, our diverse staff and workforce, um, are something that I, I, I truly know aren't, isn't currently, um, across the state. I, I would say, in general, just from an administration standpoint, we're the best, um, in the state. And so, some of these things I was, I walked into, and so, you know, kudos to Bev and the work that she did with her team to move the district forward in that particular way. Um, but yeah, all those reports have to go on a, a quarterly basis to the University of Iowa in regards to that.
Do we get to see those reports as a board? Or do we get to see the end result of this project, or do we, over time, do we, do we get to see anything as a board?
That's, I think that's up to you, I'm, I'm not as, uh, I, I don't necessarily know that I shared information in regards to the plan.
Okay.
Um, but obviously, it's, it's information that you could, I, I could get to you, um, and email to you.
So this forty-five thousand, if I understand it right, it's, it's a one-time, uh, support for a permanent position?
Correct. So, right now, it's truly just subsidizing the cost of the change that we've made. So, within the department, there hasn't been any additional FTE. I just changed, um, a position and moved some duties around to where we could keep the FTE within the department, but ultimately have this, here we go, I started it, but have this new position. Um, this would subsidize the cost of this position for a year.
Okay, so I think, I think this may be, I'm always leery about, uh, a grant that incents the hiring for one year.
Nope.
And then you pay for it forever.
Yeah, the FTE is, was already in the department, so again, I just moved some job responsibilities around. There's some team members that currently have responsibilities they didn't have before, and so, it was all pre-existing FTE. Again, this is just to subsidize, um, the FTE in the department. I would also add that we did apply for a four-hundred thousand dollar grant, um, we did not get that grant. Uh, we are planning on applying for it in the spring. Um, it was just, honestly, it was just about the fact that the person who I'd worked with as a partner, um, they had moved to Delaware, and the questions around that grant were, the person's moved to Delaware, how is it really truly sustainable? I could tell you that I've worked with, and I have another meeting with, um, Dr. Hooper, um, that's, uh, a part of the CET, the Center for Educational Transformation at UNI, who has been in these talks and conversations in regards to this grant. And so it's really truly about shifting and, and thinking about how we can use our, our local partners, um, better from that standpoint. So, um, I'm very optimistic that, um, we will potentially get the four-hundred thousand dollar grant in the spring. Um, but, I, I, again, I still have to work with, you know, you and I, and see where we're at and how we're gonna move forward.
Good work.
Alright, um, then all those in favor of approving the Equity-implemented Partnership sub award, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign? Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to Item R, and this is with the Lead Center and the Bremwood, um, SBRC, application for special education administration costs. And the recommended motion is that the Board approve the application to the School Budget Review Committee, SBRC, in the amount of twelve thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and sixty cents for special education administrative costs associated with the Lead Center, Bremwood. associated with the Lead Center-Bremwood Consortium Program for the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year.
So move.
Thank you Sue, in a second.
Second.
And discussion. So, this is, um, I don't know, um, Jane or Michael wants to talk about this a little bit? This is our partnership with the Lead Center up in Waverly, Bremwood.
Part of special education is you cannot charge administrative fees to special education. So, we have to, we have to fund that through the General Fund, which, as you know, every, um, special ed student is also a one-point-oh student first. So, that money supports those kind of positions. But in this unique situation where you have, uh, a facility that is doing something very specific with, um, a population of specialized education students, it is allowed by the code that you can, um, apply for authority, again, to be able to spend, no, I didn't say that right. You apply, you apply for approval from the SBRC that you can, um, code part of the administrative cost of that facility out of your special ed dollars. So, we can charge this administrative cost to special education. And it's all prorated by the number of students, um, that each district has.
Seven students, sir.
We have seven students.
Is that a typical number? We've had in the past?
I'd say that's very similar. Um, I would say it fluctuates throughout the year. So, they kind of prorate that, I think.
Yeah.
It does fluctuate throughout the year.
It has fluctuated.
Seven point oh eight students.
There's a formula that they use to determine the number of students that you are paying for your share.
Yep.
Where is this center at in Waverly? Is it freestanding from the schools, sir?
It is. It is separate.
Mm-hmm.
Sixteen Street Southwest. So, one oh six sixteen Street Southwest Waverly.
So, it's probably in Bremwood?
Yeah, it is. It is. Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Alright, and we're ready to go ahead and vote on this? Alright, then all those in favor of approving the Lead Center-Bremwood Consortium Application, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us to our second, um, consortium tonight. This is the River Hills School Consortium SBRC Application. And the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the application to the School Budget Review Committee, SBRC, in the amount of fifty thousand three hundred fifty-five dollars and forty-four cents for special education administrative costs associated with the River Hills Consortium Program for the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year.
Thank you Jessie, in a second.
Second.
Thank you. And discussion, this is a very similar, um, consortium agreement, again, to be able to charge the special ed program
Administrative cost.
For the administrative cost.
To admini- to special ed funding.
Yes.
So, same story.
At River Hills, yeah. Twenty-eight.
Total.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight for us.
And is Cedar Falls still the?
They are the fiscal.
They're the fiscal?
They are the fiscal agent, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's determined by the location of where the facility is.
Where it resides, okay, great. Okay. And you can see the breakdown here again. I assume this changes also throughout the year a little bit. Okay.
And there's no discussion of closing this building because it has been rumored that this, at some point, this school is gonna be closed.
I have not heard that. Um, yeah, I have not heard that. But I think every year, we, we look at that and decide how to best serve the students.
And how do they, um, justify the, um, expense difference? Like at Bremwood is seventeen fifty-eight and in River Hills is fifteen thirty-five.
Yeah, they take the, the total number and divide it by the number of students. So, you're getting a per pupil cost?
Mm-hmm. If you were kids then.
Up at the top, do you see that?
Yeah, I do.
Mm-hmm.
So, the budget would be built on?
Yep.
It could be number of teachers by the severity. It could be.
It could be several.
It could be seasoned teachers compared to new ones. Um, you know, two hundred dollars is not that big a difference.
Right.
Is there any, I guess, practical reason for this motion? Um, we're not increasing the budget authority according to this. And I think we exceed our special education budget every year for special education needs anyway, don't we? So, any overage comes out of the General Fund anyway.
Any overage is then SBRC authority back to special ed?
You get the, to authority.
Just like ELL, just like ELL or the overage.
At risk. Is at risk in the same?
So, it's a two-part process?
No, at risk, you have to live with the budget that you.
No. Okay.
This will cause the overage in the special ed budget to increase.
If there is an overage, yes.
And that overage can be, uh, we can get.
You recover the authority.
You can recover the authority. Yep.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, anything else then? Alright, seeing none. Um, then all those in favor of approving the River Hills School Consortium Application, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. This then takes us to Exhibit T. I can't tell you when the last time was that we had an Exhibit T. But it is that the Board of Education adopt the amended resolution authorizing an interfund loan between the General Fund and the Capital Projects Fund, up to one point five million, the Physical Plant and Equipment Fund Levy Fund, up to one point five million, the Food Service Fund, up to one point two million, and the Student Activity Fund, up to one million, as provided under the DE declaratory order. And I'm assuming DE is Department of Ed?
Yes, that motion should not be an amended resolution. That's what happened last year at this time. We brought this and then we added another fund to it. So, we amend, had another exhibit, so.
So, it should read, the Board of Education adopt the resolution authorizing an interfund loan between the General Fund and the Capital Projects Fund of one point five million. Okay.
So move.
Thanks Sue. Thank you India. And discussion.
My question is, Michael, for the Food Service Fund, one point two million with, you know, our, um, program with free lunches, would these numbers need to be this high?
When we get, um, revenue from the federal government, it comes in later than when kids pay their own. So, it does push back the revenue coming to the district. So, that would, that would, um, shorten the cash flow availability. But it's also, um, regarding that when we do payroll, it's all funneled through the General Fund Bank Account. And then, once it's all processed, then there's a monthly entry to make it whole. But in the meantime, General Fund is keeping the cash flow going in the, in the lunch fund.
Alright, thank you.
Good question Sue. Alright, is there anything else on that? Alright, then seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Interfund Loan Resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign. Chair votes aye, motion carried. That takes us then to item U, and this is actually for review this evening. This is not for vote. This is information only. It's our first reading of the two board policy changes, two oh three point zero, which is Board Member Conflicts of Interest, and five oh one point four, entrance age and requirements. And again, I will turn this over to Tara Thomas, our Director of School and Community Relations. Welcome back.
Thank you. The only significant note to share on two oh three for Board Member Conflicts of Interest is, you see in the second paragraph, the benefit amount has now been up to six thousand, replacing twenty-five hundred. And there is a line that has been struck from five oh one point four and replaced with new language.
Okay. I bet there's some questions.
Are we on the next one? Five oh one point four?
Yeah, we, you can do either one. Go ahead.
Is this?
She did both.
Is the age, is that a state law? We're not changing it from the past as I
Right.
read this. But the September fifteenth, is that, does the state require that or is that our own choice?
It says in the bottom paragraph, it's State of Iowa requirement.
Yeah.
Was that for the state?
Yes.
September fif-
Yes, September fifteenth is that.
And what we were talking about at the U was, you know, um, newcomers to the country that maybe had not had all their vaccinations.
Mm-mm, he's talking about the age.
I'm talking about the starting age.
Yeah, we didn't make any change. He just asked the question. It's a state thing.
Age five, September fifteenth, is that?
That's been the current policy language.
Is that our choice or is that the state?
State, that's state law.
That's the state law.
Yep. It's exactly the same wording at state.
As a parent of a secretary from sixteen kid.
Yep, I have a twenty, I have a twenty-second kid, so, yep.
Okay.
Alright, so Tara will.
I don't know if this matters. Just one thing, I just want to clarify there, the age that students can come to school, that's the, that's the minimum age. That is different from compulsory education laws. So, compulsory education is the, the, the years that they must be in school, which is six years old to sixteen. So, that's when they, they, they have to be in school by age six. They can start as early as five. So, that is a little bit different and both of those are governed by the state of Iowa. So, I just, just wanna make sure we're clear on that.
Thank you. Now, I was just gonna set, tell Tara that we'd see her next time to, on the second reading. But is there anything else? Are there any other questions on that?
We have a lot of, uh, exceptions on the immunizations.
I don't know. I would have to inquire of student services that oversees the health contract. But I can do that for you and follow up.
I'm just curious, cause it, you know, there's been a lot of
Mm-hmm.
public discussion about that recently.
Yeah, yeah, the anti-vax and.
Some buildings do have quite a few.
Mm-hmm.
Like that?
When I was at Carver, we had quite a few.
So, we should, uh, it'd be interesting to know what our risk level actually is.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Not that we can do anything about it, no. We can always do something about it.
That's right, Lyle.
Work on it, right, exactly.
Well, you can take other precautions and, and not suggest it, yes.
Well, and there could be education, if there, if it's, if there's barriers to why people aren't receiving them, that could be worked on for sure.
And now speaking of that, like for vaccinations, I don't think you probably know this, so this is random, but, um, like, does Blackhawk County Public Health have that, like in multiple, multiple languages that we need to service, like our students from?
I know people's.
That's a good question. I know they at least have it in Spanish from when I was at Carver.
And I believe they have it in French as well. But I don't know if, as far as like martialise or some of the languages from Burma. That's a good question.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay Tara, anything else for her? Alright. Woo, that concludes our action items for this evening. Actually, it was one before then. So, I will turn it over to Dr. Lindeman for her superintendent's report.
Alright, I will make it brief because we've been at this two hours already. But, um, first of all, Rhonda's still in the, in the audience. So, Rhonda, I don't, I just am curious to know how it feels from down at that, that, that area. Thank you again to her and welcome again to Stacy. We're just happy to have, um, we're happy to have two people who care so much about our, our school district and our students. So, welcome there. And I guess the other comment I would just make, I, I had the opportunity this weekend to attend the Lego League, the Regional Lego League. And I don't know, a couple of you might have been interested in saying some things. I know both people on the side of me worked at that event. We had, uh, thirty-two teams that came to our district, um, some from within Waterloo schools, but most of them outside of Waterloo schools. So, we had, uh, shy of a thousand people who came in and out of, uh, Central Middle School and the Waterloo Career Center. We, uh, hosted it in, in part of both of those buildings and we had food available and we had, uh, just, it really worked well. We had a lot of volunteers. I had the opportunity to serve as a robot design judge, which was really great. Uh, my son was actually competing, but I did not judge his, because that's, you can't do that. So, uh, somebody else did that.
That would be wrong.
Right, that was wrong. So, he was obviously judged by, in a different room, by a different robot design judge. So, it was really, it was, it was an amazing opportunity. And I just was so interested to see the designs for the students. And, and when you're serving as a judge, you ask them a lot of questions that they don't know are coming. But they, you know, it was rare. There were a few times where, when you asked a question and they just kind of looked like, I don't know the answer to this. And a few people weren't. But most of the time, the kids were just fighting over who was going to get to answer the questions because they knew the answers. They knew why they had built it a certain width. They knew why that was advantageous. They knew what the disadvantages of the, the width or a, a particular modulars on the, modules on their, on their robots. So, it was really a great, a great experience and it brought a lot of people to Waterloo and just a, a fun day, really fun day. And thanks for Chanley and, uh, Stacy and Kingsley did some judging for a little while. He came and took my place. So, it was, it was great. Um, Matt O'Brien was our official scorer and we had a lot of, I shouldn't have started mentioning because I know I left people out. But it was, it was a great, great amount.
We can say thanks to Angelique because she really did Yelman's work in getting all those people organized. So, excellent.
We also had, there were junior teams there as well. So, there were, there actually were thirty FLL teams and then there were, I think, eight.
Eight. I got to judge them.
In the afternoon, yeah. It was really cool.
It was really fun. Yep, so. Alright, well, we can move on to Board Member comments. And Lyle, with your, um, if you give me the discretion of starting down here to my left, because India and Jessie both have a kid in band, so I'm gonna let them go first. So, India, hit it.
I just wanted to mention, um, I know we're having a big push for, uh, bus drivers hiring, um, you know, getting the word out. So, you know, if you're looking for work, Durham Bus Services is looking for drivers. Um, and, you know, you can be with the kiddos. You know, if you're retired or you have some free time or have some mornings open, consider working for Durham. I know that we, at the school, um, it's very important to get our school, our kids to school safe and sound. So, if you're looking for a job, look at their website.
Thank you.
My favorite time of year? Not my favorite time of year. Uh, actually, I'm, yes, yes. I'm, I'm gonna give out a, I'm gonna give out a special thanks I, to Tara and her department. The video from the Metro Rescue East West duel was just amazing they had on YouTube. I don't know if anybody watched that video, but they, it was a, a very spirited, uh, meet and video, which is, uh, a great capturing of that event. That's one of probably the best attended Metro meets we've had in a number of years. So, uh, anyway, great job to your, uh, video staff, but.
Yay. Yeah, Jessie kept his mic on.
And then, also, since it's our only meeting, I'm almost got it, um, in December, about at Waterloo, it's coming up, so.
Yes.
So.
Sure is. Alrighty. Thanks Jessie, go Sue.
Well, I'm off topic a little bit here, but, um, with the bitter, bitter cold that's coming up, I go by quite a few bus stops and I see kids without hats and gloves on. So, I'd like to remind parents to please check with your school offices if you don't have the funds to get hats and gloves for your kids, because they also often have closets available to get. And there's many resources available within the community. So, if you would probably give Tara's office a call and they can plug you in somewhere because, um, we just want our kids all to be safe out of the bus stops and some kids wait there a very long time. So, I just would encourage that. Also, I just wanted to, um, the, the, um, east-west basketball game. I thought it was excellently. Also, I just wanted to, the, the East-West basketball game, I thought it was excellently done. Behavior was good by all kids, I thought it was a, a good situation. And support West High tomorrow night, boys' basketball. Is girls there too? Just boys? They're playing Cedar Falls, and we would really like to beat our nemesis.
Thank you Sue.
One other thing, sorry, is Jane, I was wondering if you could just give us a quick bus update when you brought that up about drivers? Just how we're doing with Durham and the meetings and everything you've had with Durham, and just the public might want to know that.
Right, we are, we are working, and there definitely is a shortage of drivers, so we are meeting with them on a very regular basis to monitor how things are going. We, we are still having, you know, a few incidents, actually there was one today, I was out at a building just greeting students, and I noticed that kids were coming in late and they were actually coming off of a bus, so they, I knew that they were late. So we are really working hard on that to, to improve the quality of services there. It will improve when we have enough drivers. And so, for example, I know that today, I talked with a parent who said that they could not get through to the bus garage, and really, the office staff also are certified drivers, so sometimes if somebody is gone or something, they, they have to pull some of their office staff to go drive around, which they're qualified to do, which is, is not a problem, except for that it shorts their office staff, and so it's just not, it's just not the best situation when they're short-staffed. And so, we are meeting with them on a regular basis, we are trying very hard to improve the services. They are definitely a willing participant, and they've had some staff turnover as well, so, you know, we're, we're working hard on that. Thank you.
Thanks. Stacy, do you want to go next? You don't have to say anything.
I just want to say that I'm very honored and humbled to be here, and I'm very excited, and I will give my all through the time that I'm here, and Rhonda, I hope to have you as an asset.
Thank you. Wingman. Thank you. Lyle?
Congratulations, welcome. Concerning the Lego, I don't know how many teams we have, I observed it for a little while. We, Waterloo schools, do we know how many participated? Well, my real question is, how can we encourage more to participate in the future? Because these kids, it's just amazing, I mean, they're so excited, and it's at an age where, you know, if you can get them interested in something like that, it is really, I think, can be a long-term benefit, so.
I've been part of FLL for ten years. My son is nineteen, and he was part of the first Kingsley team that competed when he was nine. So, over those ten years, I've just seen a lot of change in Waterloo. In the morning session on Saturday, there were, I saw a Kingsley team, a Kitchell team, a couple orange teams.
All eight, Highland had a team, Kitchell had two teams.
But, yeah, it was somewhere in the morning and then the afternoon, yeah.
I don't know if, if those, the afternoon ones, but all the morning ones were all Waterloo. The six to ten-year-olds.
And, oh, yes.
The little ones.
The littles.
Yeah, for the.
The expo that they did.
For the FLL teams, it was, most of the elementary schools were represented. I don't think our middle schools were there because I did talk to like Tamara Willis, who does Hoover, and they didn't get into it. They closed really fast. These regionals are really hard to get into, and you are a coach, you're sitting there with your finger on a button, and as soon as it opens, you hit. And so if you have two teams you need to get in, you hit twice. So that's why having a Waterloo regional is so amazing, because we've only ever had the CF one around here for so many years.
First.
I've traveled all over to go to regionals, and I got a lot of positive feedback from there. So we had, they had a capacity to have sixteen in the morning and in the afternoon, but one had dropped out from each. There were thirty full FLL teams, and I do see them having just as much return. There, we'll have no problem getting people in.
So what limits the capacity? Why can't there be more then?
That's from the state.
The state, the Iowa State Extension runs this, and so they, they set up the rules, they have, it's kind of like you host it and they, it's like a wedding in a bag. It's an event in a bag, and so they bring it and they, they do all the signage, they do everything, and it is limited by the, the, the rules of governance. So they will have as many regionals as they need to serve everyone, so they will get into a regional, they're just not guaranteed to get in the one that they want to based on location. Last year, my son, we went to Webster City because we did not get in a local one.
And we actually served more than, you, if you do an all-day event, you can only do twenty-four. What they did instead was they did two full events and they split them in half, so they were able to serve.
Thirty, up to thirty, up to thirty-three teams.
Yeah, thirty, up to thirty-two then that way.
So all the Legos, all the equipment, all the setup, that's not owned by the schools?
Yes, it is. They're just competing. This is just a competition.
But the schools, they own the.
Right, yep, and they bring their, they bring their work and they bring their robots and they compete, and there's, there's quite a few events. Some of them are presentation-based, some of them are project-based, some of them are performance-based. So there's, they get a schedule and they, they run their robot, they might run over here and do a presentation to a judge, and so they do things all, the whole, the whole time they're there. It's a pretty busy schedule.
Yeah, there's six sessions throughout the day that they have to go to. We do though, for the regionals, had to provide the equipment that they compete on. So those tables we do own, those would be the only ones, because they have, has to be standard. But like every school, you get, you get a kit, you put it all together, it's got all your little Legos, you build it, you just have to build yourself a plywood table.
So if we were to expand it, we'd have to have our own district competition previous to that, just as a separate entity?
To do a trial or to?
Yeah, to, to encourage more, I mean, I know ours had two teams, I think. So every school, if they wanted two or three teams, we'd have to almost do our own thing.
There are teams that have.
There are a lot of schools that have more than one.
More than one.
Oh, yeah.
And lastly, I think this is our last meeting this year, so.
It is.
Happy holidays, Merry Christmas to everybody. Have a safe holiday.
Everybody always steals everything that I was gonna say. Yep, that's it, I'm done. So it, that's our last meeting. We meet twice in January. We'll be back here January thirteenth. Again, you know, safe and happy holidays, blessings, and Happy New Year to everyone. And it's always, like I said, change your guard. Welcome Stacy. We'll see you soon, Ms. Rhonda. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn if there is nothing further to come before the board.
So move.
Takes in a second. Alright, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you and good night. Stay warm.
We'll be at our last meeting in about two minutes, I think.